Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to bring the October 2nd, 2023 Pender County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. At this time, I'll ask you to stand while Commissioner Hardy gives our invitation and Commissioner Rhodes gives our salute to the flag.
If you will bow your head. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you today just seeking your guidance and your will in all that we do and decisions that we make here before Pender County. Lord, lead us and guide us and direct us in all the things that we do. In your name we pray, amen.
Can we have that?
That's great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any veterans in the house? Please stand and be recognized. So, having an opportunity to have read the agenda, do we have any motions to amend, change, or adopt? I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda, Ms. Reed.
Start it up.
All in favor? Do we have any signups for a public hearing on agenda items?
No, ma'am, Chair.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bufkin, 7.1, you have the honor today.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. It is quite an honor and it's a momentous occasion. A young member of the Pender County community has recently earned the highest award in Girl Scouting, the Girl Scout Gold Award, and we have a resolution honoring her on that occasion. Her name is Sarah Woolard. She's here in the audience, and if it pleases the board, I might read the resolution.
Would you go to the podium and have her join you and read the resolution? Thank you, Mr. Bufkin.
Board members, I'm joined by Sarah Woolard, recipient of the Girl Scout Gold Award. And I'm presenting you an honorary resolution on the occasion of her earning that award. This is a resolution of the Pender County Board of Commissioners honoring Sarah G. Woolard on the occasion of her attaining the Girl Scout Gold Award. Whereas Sarah G. Woolard is a resident of Pender County, North Carolina, and whereas Sarah G. Woolard recently earned the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest award in Girl Scouting, in part for her Take Action project that raised and continues to raise awareness of the impacts of social isolation on residents of skilled nursing facilities. And whereas Sarah G. Woolard's efforts successfully connected individuals and groups in the community with residents of skilled nursing facilities, ensuring that these residents continue to have visitors, have the opportunity to forge new friendships, and avoid the detrimental impacts of social isolation. And whereas Pender County values the work of Sarah G. Woolard and the lives of every member of the community, particularly residents of skilled nursing facilities, now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Pender County, North Carolina, that the Board of Commissioners of Pender County honors, celebrates, and expresses its deepest appreciation for the work of Sarah G. Woolard that earned her the Girl Scout Gold Award, particularly her Take Action project to support Penders, Pender County residents of skilled nursing facilities by raising awareness of the impacts of social isolation in skilled nursing facilities. And upon execution by the officers of the county, the clerk to the board shall transmit a copy of this resolution to Sarah G. Woolard, adopted by the Pender County Board of Commissioners this second day of October 2023. Board members, Sarah Woolard.
No. This is nerve wracking.
Can you pull the mic down and speak up just a little bit?
Not that tall.
That sounds like an interesting project. How did you come to have this as your project for the Gold Award?
It took a while to figure out what I really wanted to do with this. There were so many different topics that I could choose in the community, but ultimately I ended up doing a Gold Award project on social isolation in the hospital where my mother works upstairs. I used to go to the, when there were hurricanes, we used to go and stay at the hospital under like a lockdown, and I would always spend time with the residents upstairs and play Scrabble. And I realized how isolated they could be up there, so I wanted to try to do anything I could to make it a little better stay upstairs.
And your mother is the director of Pender Memorial, Ruth Glasser?
Yes.
Can you stand up, Ms. Glasser? And your dad's here with you, too?
Yes.
So, could you both approach, and we will take a vote on this resolution, and I will sign it, and y'all can have a picture taken for the paper. Do I have a motion of approval for the resolution on the honoring Ms. Sarah Woolard?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Start it up.
All in favor? Ms. Lexie, do you have a copy? May I have it, please?
That's really a good project. I witnessed some with the isolation that people have to deal with people, and so that's truly a worthwhile project.
Thank you.
All right. If you will sign, Mr. Andrews. So, Patrick, if you want to come in front of us and present Ms. Woolard and her parents with this award so that Andy can get a picture? Can we stand? Yeah, Patrick. Oh, no, no, you're fine. We're just background anyway. We're the important ones. Congratulations. 7.2, Mr. Chris Ward, Focus Broadband, Pender County update. Thank you for being here with us today.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for the invitation. I think I was last here in January.
And thank you for your agreement to participate in our community meetings tomorrow at Penderly Auditorium and on Thursday evening at Shiloh Volunteer Fire Department.
Yes, ma'am. So, as she said, my name is Chris Ward. I'm Business Development Director at Focus Broadband. Thank you, commissioners, county employees, and guests here today allowing me to speak. I'm going to give you an update on our projects if you could go to the next slide. First project we're going to talk about is the first and the largest project, the USDA Reconnect. The United States Department of Agriculture granted us $21.6 million in 2020. I actually announced that in September of 2020. Everybody knows we had an election and we had COVID and everything else, so there's a lot of things that's happened since that time, but that was a big announcement for Pender County. Not only is the $21.6 million coming from the federal government, there's $7.2 million coming from Focus Broadband, so that project's right at $29 million total. An update on that project, currently we have serviced over, and I changed the number, it was 1,600 when I sent it in, we just updated service to another 100 additional houses, so there's over 1,700 addresses in the cane tuck, Holly Shelter, and portions of what we're calling our Caswell area that have service available. And our construction crews are currently working in multiple phases in those areas that have another additional 1,300 addresses. As soon as those have construction complete and they have service available, then we'll have service to roughly 4,000 different residents and addresses in those areas. Every month, we're starting new phases. There's a lot of stuff going on. It's an ongoing project. We anticipate to be done by the end of 2024 with the majority of the project and everything complete by 2025. The next project on the next slide I want to talk to you about is the most recent grant that we won that was awarded through North Carolina. So, this is a state grant that was $4 million in total, along with $547,000 that not only Pender County committed, but Focus Broadband also committed, so that's over a $5 million project. So, we're looking at $33 to $34 million of projects that have been brought into Pender County in the last three years. We finalized our partnership with the county and with the state in March. That allowed us to begin the design and permitting process. If you notice on the map, I'm going to show you in just a second, and the large map I bought for the audience's benefit, the areas that are in the Great Grant often overlap or interconnect with areas that are independent reconnect grants, so two different grants, but they kind of co-mingle. We will be working on both of those projects at the same time. Yes, ma'am.
I hate to interrupt your flow and your presentation, but I thought it was very important for the public to know, I found it interesting how you have to apply for these funds and the amount of work that goes into the distribution of every million dollars worth of grant money. Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll get to that. That was later on, but I'll go ahead and address that now.
If it's later on, then let it be later on.
Okay, all right, I'll get back to that point because that is something that everyone here needs to hear because they think, or maybe don't think we're moving fast enough, but we can only go as fast as the federal government allows us to.
Or that if you go one way, you're not coming on down.
Right. So, if you look at our map, you can see the contiguous areas that are the Great Grant and the Reconnect Grant. We're going to work on those together at the same time. This will bring service to additional 1,200 addresses, unserved addresses in Pender County. So, we're right at 8,300 addresses that will be served when these two projects are completed. The first folks will have service the first quarter of next year in our Great Grant area, and we'll be done with that by mid-2025 as well. And then the next slide is our map, and you can see the areas that are green are where service is available, the areas that are yellow are where we already are at constructing. Those areas are coming online as we speak. The areas that are blue are where we're going next. And if you look at Pender County as a whole, we call it the east and west kidneys because you got the spine running down the middle, which is I-40. We're working on the east side and the west side simultaneously, but what will happen is, is we complete the whole project, there'll be a ring of fiber that totally encases Pender County. So, we're connecting to our fiber off of Highway 17 for the eastern half of the county, and we're coming out of Columbus County and Bladen County for the western part of Pender County. So, it's like a choo-choo train. If you don't have a combust, if you don't have a engine tied to all the different train cars, it's not going to pull. So, we have to connect all of our fiber throughout all of these phases for it to work. And then the last thing I want to talk about, and I'll get to Commissioner Newton's point, USDA has a process that takes three steps before we can get any money. If the USDA would have given us $21.6 million in September 2020, we'd already be through with the project. But the way the USDA does projects, you have to send a letter telling them you're ready to negotiate with contractors. Once you negotiate with a contractor, you both have to have contracts that are binding that they approve. The second thing you do after they approve your contractor is you have to send them the designs and specs of what you're going to do. In other words, your whole engineering plans. After they approve that, then they will send the final contract. It may take two to three months before they actually approve on that. And, you know, the USDA is just a small part of the federal government, but the federal government has given away trillions of dollars since COVID, so you can see that there's a lot of issues with getting things done on time if somebody's on vacation or if somebody's out. The USDA is not a department that you can call up and get the boss on the phone normally. So, we're moving as fast as we can. The good news is we have a office in Pender County, if you go to the next slide, that'll soon be open. And when I was here last time, I told you it'd be open in July, so there's two people that can keep their jobs in line as contractors, and I won't say politicians, I'll say the weatherman. So, we're.
We appreciate that very much.
The outside of the building has been completed for months, the inside with the final details is what we're waiting on, but we expect to have that open in 2023. Hopefully, people in Pender County are looking for jobs because we've been trying to fill quite a few jobs. We only have one warehouse and two customer care positions filled in Pender County and are looking for multiple engineering type jobs in Pender County. We want the people that work in Pender County and are based out of that office to be from Pender County if at all possible. And if anybody has questions about where service will be or when service will be available, you get, go to our getfocusbroadband.com, select Pender County, leave your name and number and information on there, and we will contact you and send you regular updates.
Mr. Ward?
Yes, ma'am.
When you have to apply incrementally for funding?
Yep.
Is that based on amount of miles of line or a cost of the project?
It's more based on money, the dollar amount, than it is the number of miles or number of addresses you're serving or things like that. You have to split up your contracts into a certain dollar amount. Now, we're starting to issue larger and larger contracts because we complained to our senators that $1 million at a time, while it's a lot of money to me and you, is not a lot of money in construction. So, now we're issuing permits or trying to get permits issued through the USDA to get approved in the eight to nine million dollar range.
So, that ought to significantly speed things up.
Yes, ma'am. The biggest issue with that is this, you're dealing with a federal agency, so there's really not anything you can do to move them forward. They've made a few concessions with us with the larger amounts, and we hope that will take care of that.
Any questions?
But once again, this was a five-year project that started in 2021. It'll be completed in 2025, so a year ahead of the five-year lawman.
And that's a commitment that Focus Broadband.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions for Mr. Ward?
Appreciate it. Watch your head.
Thank you so much. See you tomorrow evening.
Yes, ma'am.
7.3, WMPO 23rd Annual, 2023 Annual Report Overview.
Good afternoon, Ms. Chairwoman, members of the board. Thanks for the opportunity to be here today. As part of our 2022 to 2026 strategic plan, one of the items that we've, the board identified was the desire for us to get out to our members and let y'all know what services we provide. And as a way to do that, in our work plan, we've identified that we would present our annual report to each of our members on an annual basis. And so, our annual report, our annual fiscal year runs from July 1 to June 30, and I know it's a little bit later, we're into early October, but it took us a little bit of time to get the report printed and get it out. You should have a copy of the report. I'm not sure if it's at your place. I know it was delivered, so I wanted to make sure that you had that. Next slide, please. Just so everybody's aware of what a metropolitan planning organization is, we were created, the Federal Highway Act in 1962 by the federal government for any urbanized area of population of 50,000 or greater. The Wilmington MPO was created in 1973, and our role is actually to provide continuing, cooperative, and comprehensive transportation planning for the region. We're the federally designated and federally recognized transportation agency for the greater Wilmington area. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we were created in 1973. We serve a population of about 300,000 people. You can see our member jurisdictions are listed on the slide below, but we serve about 494 square miles. Next slide. We have a 13-member board that sets the policy and direction for the organization. Commissioner Hardy is on our board and represents Pender County. Next slide. So, we have a number of federal responsibilities. We have a staff of 12 that have been created to fulfill our federal responsibilities as well as desires from our member jurisdictions. And so, some of these responsibilities include the update of our long-range fiscally constrained transportation plan, and that is our, right now, Cape Fear. Moving forward, 2045, we've embarked on Cape Fear Navigating Change 2050, which I'll talk about briefly, and then Vanessa Lacer from my office is also here and is going to give you a full presentation on our Metropolitan Transportation Plan update. We're required to administer the direct attributable funds. We get about $5 million annually from the federal government, and we go through a competitive process to disperse those funds. I'll talk a little bit about where those funds are going in a minute. We're required to develop congestion management process. What that does is it looks at our major corridors, it evaluates congestion on those major corridors, and then provides recommendations for how to improve those corridors. We then fold those recommendations into our long-range transportation plan. It also identifies 33 hotspots within the region that we focus on also providing recommendations. We're required by federal law to adopt the federal functional classification system. We also work with our member jurisdictions in the development review and traffic impact analysis review. We sit on the TRCs for many of our member jurisdictions. And then we also have a transportation demand management program, which is called Go Coast, and I'll talk a little bit about their efforts here in a second. Next slide, please. So, this slide really demonstrates an overview of the presentation. I'm going to talk a little bit about our organizational assessment and all of the items that are listed on this slide, so, next slide. So, the organizational assessment, this was an assessment that we completed. We hired a consultant to look inside the organization, look at how we can improve the organization and enhance our efficiency. J.S. Lane was a consultant that we used to perform this analysis, and they did provide recommendations, and those recommendations were broken out into short, mid, and long term, short being one to two years, midterm being two to five, and long term being five to 10. That report was just finished in June, presented to the board in July, and we are working to start to implement that effort. Next slide. We have a number of long-range planning efforts that have been adopted by our board. As I mentioned, the congestion management process, the board did approve our congestion management process. We've done some work in Navassa on their Collector Street Plan, as well as a bicycle and pedestrian plan for the town of Navassa. Next slide. Also, some other planning efforts that have been worked on but have not been adopted as of June 30, the Pender County Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. We've been working with county staff to develop that plan. It was approved, recommended for approval by the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and it's assumed it will be brought to you at your October 16 meeting. Also, the Walk Wilmington Pedestrian Plan for the city of Wilmington, that was funded through the North Carolina Department of Transportation's Bicycle and Pedestrian Planning Grant Funds, and we did work with the city on that. There are also a number of bike pit feasibility studies that we've been involved in, the Golegucci Heritage Greenway Corridor, that feasibility study is kicking off with some public meetings later in the month. The Downtown Trail Phase Two and Three, those are projects in the city of Wilmington. That feasibility study has also been funded, and we've been working on the scope for that with the state, the Island Greenway, which is down in Curry Beach, and then also a Riverwalk extension in the city of Wilmington. Next slide, please. We have worked to adopt our 2024 to 2033 State and MPO Transportation Improvement Program. What this is, is it's the way that the state funds transportation infrastructure in our state and in our region. This is a program that's adopted every two years, and we work very closely with the state. As the MPO for the region, we are required to mutually adopt this with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. The Board of Transportation at NCDOT actually adopted this on June 6, and then we had a process that we went through. We had a public hearing, a public comment period, and approved that program in August. We're also working closely with our member jurisdictions to develop the project list for Priorization 7.0. That's the competitive process that NCDOT uses to fund the transportation improvement. So, projects are submitted, they go through a competitive scoring process, and then the output is the adoption of a transportation improvement program. We've also been working to submit a number of discretionary grants with the Infrastructure Investment Act, as well as the Inflation Reduction Act. There have been a number of discretionary programs that have been created by the federal government, and so we have done an analysis of all of those programs and have submitted for a Safe Streets for All grant. That would look at improving safety in our region for all modes of transportation, and we expect to know if that grant has been awarded later this year. And then we've also submitted for a Protect grant for a Resiliency Improvement Plan for our region. Next slide, please. The Cape Fear Commutes or Cape Fear Moving Forward 2045 was, is our current long-range plan. As I mentioned, Vanessa Lacer in my office will come up and present on Cape Fear Navigating Change, and so I'm not going to belabor this slide, so the next slide, please. Some highlights of our achievements from the past year. We've had a successful Federal Highway and Federal Transit Administration review. In 2012, our population, or actually based on the 2010 census, our population was over 200,000, and so with that population, we were created, we were designated as a transportation management agency. We went from a regular MPO to a TMA, and with that designation, we have a number of additional requirements, one being that we are required to go through a Federal Highway and Federal Transit Administration review every four years, and we did have a successful review. We've been working closely with the North Carolina Department of Transportation on the replacement of the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge. We are currently, well, we've evaluated our boundary. We created a Boundary Governance and Structure Subcommittee that would look at our boundary. Commissioner Hardy served on that subcommittee. We recommended no changes to our current boundary. We've been very successful in collaboration with NCDOT, just on the next to last August redistribution. We just had a presentation to our board at that last meeting, and we were able to work with NCDOT through Federal Highway Administration's August redistribution and to be able to bring an additional $265 million in federal funds to the state of North Carolina. Next slide. As I mentioned, our transportation demand management program, this is Go Coast, and so they have a subcommittee that is comprised of major employers in the region that focus on trying to get people out of their single occupancy vehicles, promoting alternative modes of transportation, walking, biking, carpooling, vanpooling, et cetera. And so, we've had a number of successful events, including the Brunswick Heritage Ride. We just had another Brunswick Heritage Ride last weekend. We had over 130 participants. We had. We have a commuter challenge. Actually, there was a press release this afternoon or this morning that went out. Go greener. And that's the commuter challenge that we're doing. It's going to be a month long. The last commuter challenge was in October of '22. This one started on October 1, and we'll go through the 31st of the month. We have a Beer Looker Campaign. If you drive around the region, you can see on the billboards that there's a number of education pieces related to bike pit safety. And then we've also have a commuter-friendly employer program. And we've also worked to enhance our social media, both at the MPO and through the TDO programs. Next slide. We are renovating a building that will be our future home of our office space. This started in August of 2022, and we expect it to be complete in early '24. This building is located downtown Wilmington. It was actually built in 1894 as a grocery store, and we are renovating it. This is a partnership between the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the city of Wilmington, and New Hanover County, but it will serve as office space for MPO staff as well as a boardroom for the board. Next slide.
That's not the old Jacoby Lewis building, is it?
No.
Is it down there near it?
It's, that's at 525 North Fourth Street, which is in the Brooklyn Arts District. It's an old Stein building that used to be on Furniture Row.
Okay, gotcha.
As I mentioned, we have 12 staff. We have a planning side of the house. We also have a technical services side of the house. The technical services side of the house focuses on traffic impact analysis review, development review, as well as traffic counts. And you can see, they've been part of over 1,100 site development reviews, 73 TIAs, and we've collected over 500 traffic counts. We collect 372 traffic counts annually on our area roadways, and then also, last year, we had 119 special requests. Next slide. As I mentioned previously, we received direct attributable funds. We've been able to disperse those funds through competitive processes. And so this slide just demonstrates what was awarded in the FY '23 call. Next slide. And this shows the current projects that are under construction in the region. Many of these are bicycle and pedestrian improvements in our member jurisdictions. Next slide. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do appreciate the opportunity to be before you this afternoon.
Any questions for Mr. Cusman?
Last week, did they offer the military cut off?
Yes, sir.
A connector, that's great. I mean, ties into 140.
There was a lot of work, a lot of work that went into that.
Yeah, by me, yeah.
Yeah, and so that actually showed up on our thoroughfare plan back in 1999, and in our long-range plan, and the 1999 to 2025 plan work started on that in 2005 with the environmental permitting. And so to finally have it open to completion is huge for this region. And as you mentioned, Commissioner McCoy, that it will connect with the Hampstead Bypass. The first piece of the Hampstead Bypass is under construction. That's expected to open in a few years, and then the second piece will be under construction in a couple of years. And so things are moving in the right direction.
Yeah. You're already familiar with that intersection there. It is really, you know, on traffic.
Is there a place to see all these projects and the plans? Are they aligned?
Yes, we have a website, www.wmpo.org. And if you go there, you can, there's a number of different headings, but one is Plans. It shows all of our plans, another is the projects, has a description of the projects, and then we have if they're available, the design plans and things of that nature.
So the plans that you rank for priority, those plans are, the list of those plans are there?
So what we do is, for prioritization, we list, we have a, we pull the projects from our long-range transportation plan in working with our members. We go through a process that we work with the board to identify which projects that we will submit. We, as the MPO in Wilmington, we have 20 projects that we can submit per mode. We submit those projects through approval by the board, and then those projects are scored. We actually have to adopt per statute a local input methodology. We adopt that through working with the board. That is how the MPO assigns our local input points. We get to assign local input points at the regional and the division tiers. And then the output of that is the adoption of our state and MPO TIP. And all of that is done through working with our board. So, and yes, all of our agenda items are available online.
I'm on the Cape Fear RPO. We work together a lot. I mean, you guys have earned, and also Cape Fear RPO. So we all work together for the region.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it always. And next, we have Ms. Lacer. Am I saying that right? To talk to us about the WMPO 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan Development and Outreach.
All right, thank you so much. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information and give an update on our planning efforts for Cape Fear Navigating Change 2050. I'll just give an overview of the plan itself, let you know what we've been working on, and then make sure to let anyone watching or reading the minutes understand how they can be involved in giving their public input. So this is a federally required plan of the WMPO. It's federally required of all MPOs. So every MPO, every 19 MPOs in the state of North Carolina is required to not only create this plan, but also update it every five years. This is the blueprint of our transportation for the region. It looks at what type of transportation and what, where that transportation is needed for the next 25 years. It is a multi-year planning process, and our current plan moving forward 2045 is due for an update in 2025. So we're getting started now on the next update, so we can meet that deadline. So some requirements from a federal level again for this plan. This plan must be multimodal. It must include planning for all six transportation modes. Those modes are aviation, bicycle and pedestrian, ferry and water transportation, rail, inclusive of freight and passenger rail, public transportation and roadway. It must be fiscally constrained, and this is likely where this plan differs from most of the plans that we have in this area, because it's required that every project included in the plan have prospective funding associated with it. So our staff will be creating this plan, so it will be done 99% in-house. We will actually contract out for this portion and bring in an expert to do that financial forecasting. So the projects included, again, have funding attached to them. So these are projects that can be built. This plan must have a minimum 20-year planning horizon. WMPO takes it a little above and beyond and does 25 years. It must adhere to our adopted public involvement policy. We are looking at that through our public participation process, and in fact, that policy was updated earlier this year. It must be created using growth forecasts that are consistent with local land use plans. So part of the research that goes into this effort is looking at all of our member jurisdictions, all of the municipalities and counties, looking at their planning they've already done, their transportation plans, their comprehensive plans, their ordinances, making sure that this plan includes projects that are appropriate for the development that has already been identified and meets the goals of those jurisdictions and counties as well. So I want to talk now a little bit about how this plan actually influences implementation of these projects. How does it actually touch projects being built? And it really does that in two ways. First, because it is the blueprint for our transportation network for the entire region and will be used by federal, state, and local governments to guide their own transportation projects, in essence, everybody doing transportation planning and transportation implementation in this area will use this plan. So they will consult it, they will see how the pieces all fit together for our region. It will influence every single transportation project for the region. The second way that it impacts getting projects built is through funding. Every project included in this plan is eligible to compete for state funding. So this diagram on the right shows kind of how this plan interacts with other planning. At the very top, CTP stands for Comprehensive Transportation Plan. That's the wish list of all the projects in the region that would be wonderful to have done. The Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which we're working on now, boils that down to projects that can actually be built because there is money associated. Further, the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan, that is the state money. So once we've identified projects, we've identified the funding associated, the state money can help pay for some of those, but there's other money available as well. There's federal money, local money. Grand tours want to see transportation projects in long-range plans. If a project is in this plan, it's recognized as a regional priority, it has funding associated, it basically moves this project to the front of the line. So now I want to talk a little bit about what we've been doing. I've talked a little bit about what the plan is, why it's important to get projects in the plan for your area, for the county. We have been hard at work since August, actually, of last year, getting ready for this effort. And right now, we're in the phase of convening two different steering committees, Citizens' Advisory Committee and a Technical Steering Committee, which I'll talk about a little bit more, and we're in Phase One of public outreach. After we conclude this phase, we'll move into the project development phase, and then we'll also be doing that financial piece, identifying funding and then associating it with those projects. In December of 2024 through May of '25, we'll be doing draft plan development. And in June of 2025, we'll have that draft plan ready, and we'll release that out to the public for public comment during our public outreach phase two. That will be our final public outreach phase. In July and August of 2025, we'll take all those comments that we receive from the public and our steering committees and provide a finalized plan. In September and October, we'll be presenting that final plan to our board and our technical coordinating committee, and then in November of 2025, we'll be seeking plan adoption. So I mentioned we have two different steering committees. The first is the Citizens Advisory Committee, and their role is to assist staff with building the most robust and diverse public outreach campaign we possibly can. Each member of that committee was hand-selected by our board members, so they, a board member of the WMPO, so they represent each of the 10 member jurisdictions. They were chosen specifically because of their connection to the community. So their roots in the community and their ability to help get the word out and help us make sure that voices are heard from each of the jurisdictions. Your CAC member is Damian Buchanan, who is also the Pender County Planning Board member. He's right now the star of the CAC. He was very successful in getting a meeting with the superintendent, Dr. Breedlove, of Pender County Schools, and Pender County Schools has come on as a promotion partner and has emailed the survey that we, I'll talk about a little more, out to parents, staff, and is responsible for an increase in survey responses. So this is working, and so we definitely thank that CAC member for their efforts. The second steering committee is the Technical Steering Committee, which we're calling MTPC. They will really be focused on the nuts and bolts of the plan itself. So they're going to be developing criteria, metrics, they're going to be evaluating projects, they're going to be working on policy recommendations. This is a group of subject matter experts in each of the modes. For instance, the Assistant Director of the Airport is on that committee. We also have urban planning folks, public health, emergency management, and diversity and inclusion. So we have Tommy Batson from Emergency Management, we have Daniel Adams from Planning, who are going to be serving on that committee for Pender County. I want to get into public outreach a little bit. This is the cornerstone of the plan. This is how we know what our communities want and need. Public outreach Phase One kicked off in August and will conclude at the end of November. And then, as I mentioned, Phase Two is in June of 2025, when the draft plan will be available for review. We are using a survey, which is available in English and Spanish. We're also using stakeholder interviews and focus groups to get that input from the community. We're doing a great deal of promotion. We're doing public meetings. We've done six so far, five in-person, one virtual. We have ongoing pop-up and outreach events, as well as presentations like this one throughout the entire outreach period. We're doing media promotion through press releases, a social media campaign. We've produced two videos. We have a webpage, of course. We're doing email blasts, and we have a handout and a poster as well. And Pender County staff have been very helpful in getting these handouts and posters out. Just a snapshot of our public meetings. We did have 106 attendees. We had large format maps there as well for discussion purposes, and we received 90 map comments. Again, just a snapshot of the outreach and presentations that we're doing in the month of October. We're on tour of all the governing boards for our 10 member jurisdictions. We have the Belleville Fall Festival coming up this Saturday, and then we also have some to-be-announced events that will come later. So this is the handout that we have. You may have seen it in these government offices. The QR code to the survey is there. It's in English and Spanish on the back. And I want to just show you the survey. This really is our most powerful tool in understanding what the community wants and needs, and again, making sure that those needs are reflected in this plan with the projects that can be built that will eventually provide a benefit to the community. Just pointing out here the button to translate the survey into Spanish. So that's what it looks like when it's translated. This question is really asking the respondent to decide how they would spend transportation dollars. Which of these types of projects would they put money toward? Would they want to do public transportation? Would they want to improve or maintain roads? How about more roads? So we're asking them to click and drag those coins into each of these buckets, basically. And there's a little icon that gives you more information if you're unsure of what, let's say, public transportation looks like. You can click that, and it'll give you some examples. The survey then asks about things that could change. So current travel behavior, how are you traveling now? It's looking at your lifestyle. What types of transportation would you like to be using in the future? What are some obstacles or barriers to transportation for you? Would you like to be walking and biking more, but you don't? What are the reasons why? Some preferences. We're going to be asking about priorities like safety or convenience. What is the most important thing for you when choosing a transportation mode? Resiliency. We're asking about how important is it that our transportation network can recover quickly from a storm, for instance? Or how prepared do you feel we need to be for flooding? And then finally, we're asking about the future, so things like e-bikes and drone transportation, what is the interest level there? We have an interactive map where respondents can click on one of those modes at the top and drag it down to an intersection or a point on the road where there's an issue and let us know specifically, here's a problem. You can point out potholes. Any maintenance requests or maintenance identification needs, needs that are identified, we will send on to the appropriate agency. So if there's something going on in your neighborhood, on your street, this is a great opportunity to let us know. If you would like to see changes in bicycle and pedestrian facilities for your community, you can show us exactly where those should be. And finally, our last question, we ask about some demographic information. We're intentionally asking this so that we can tailor our presentations and our outreach and make sure that the folks that we haven't captured through survey data, we can reach out to them in other ways. We can maybe do a stakeholder interview. We can go to an event. We can bring some paper copies of the survey somewhere. So we're really looking at this monthly to make sure that we have the same amount of people responding from each of our jurisdictions as a representative as far as population is concerned. We also here have a link to the website, some links to take you right to social media as well. So our ask is that you please help us promote the survey. Again, we want to know what Pender County wants and needs. These are methods that work, so sharing our posts on social media, hanging a poster, sharing a press release, or emailing this information to your group would be most helpful. We also have a contest. If you like to win things, if you share on social media with the hashtag #NavigatingChange2050, you can win the October prize. It's two tickets for a boat ride on the Cape Fear River. And finally, I just wanted to point out the website, wmpo.org. This is the home of everything I've talked about and more. This is where the survey lives, and you can reference any of the information that and you can reference any of the information that I've provided. And this is my contact information. I'm the project manager for this plan. And if there are any members of the public who would like to speak with me directly or have questions, I'd be happy to talk to them, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have tonight.
Any questions? Excellent presentation. It's so good to see you again.
Likewise. It's nice to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Number 11, Ms. Stanfield, reappointments to the Advisory Board of Health.
All right. Madam Chair and Board Members, these appointments to the Advisory Board of Health were carried over from a previous meeting due to the county receiving an additional applicant after the agenda had been published. Three of these appointments, those of Ms. Collins, Ms. Dawson, and Ms. Houghton, are reappointments. The current board members have a satisfactory attendance record and have indicated a willingness to continue serving on the board. As noted in the agenda item, Ms. Collins and Ms. Dawson are beyond the three-term, 10-year policy in your rules of procedure. Thus, the board should waive the rule if the board wants to reappoint those members. Ms. Houghton has served one term on the board and is eligible for reappointment. Additionally, the new application received was from Ms. Bonita Sue Piler, who would be qualified to fill the nurse position seat on the advisory board as reflected in her application included in the agenda packet. The dates for each of these terms to which these four members would serve if appointed are also included in the agenda summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have as well.
So how many open positions do we have?
On the board total?
Yes.
I believe it's six or so.
So what are we doing? Are we doing two things? What are you asking us for?
So for the Advisory Board of Health, I have four candidates presented.
For two positions?
No, not for two positions. So Ms. Collins and Ms. Dawson, for their positions. Ms. Collins, I have her down for a nurse position. Ms. Dawson would be a public member position. Ms. Denise Houghton is the optometrist position. And Ms. Bonita Sue Piler could either be a public member position, as we have two of those on that board, or a nurse position.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
So, any discussion? Any questions? Comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the reappointments and the new appointments to the Health Advisory Board.
How, which position would you like, Ms. Bonita Sue Piler? Because I have two available that she could technically fit. If you want to appoint Ms. Kimberly Collins for the nurse position, that would make Ms. Bonita Sue Piler a public member position.
They are both nurses, so I don't know.
Will have the effect of having their experience and expertise, so I think it's a distinction without a difference or a difference without any distinction.
It's just a different term, term type, term. One would end earlier. One would be retroback, right? And one would be future. I'd say the one with the longest term time. I can't remember which one it was.
That would be Ms. Collins.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Are we clear on that?
Yes.
Perhaps in the future, we could have reappointments separate from new appointments?
Yes, ma'am.
So, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? All right. Reappointment to the Parks and Rec Board, Ms. Stanfield.
Also me. So I have two applicants. I have Jamie Moore. He's currently on the board as an at-large position. And also Daniel Price for District Five's position. Both of them have served before. I hear that they have a great attendance record and are both willing to continue serving, should the board reappoint them.
So these are both reappointments?
Yes, ma'am.
This is your district, Mr. McCollum?
Yeah. Yeah, I recommend the recommendation that we appoint these.
Do I have a second?
No second.
All in favor? Mr. Manager, do you have someone, now that we're to the Water Utilities and Water Districts, do you have someone you'd like to introduce to us?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I absolutely do. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm very excited to announce that we have a new Water Utility Director, Mr. Anthony Collong. And Anthony, of course, many of you know him. He's been here before, and he's back, and we had a great conversation this morning. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, all members.
Good to have you back.
Good to see you. It is a pleasure to be back. For those who don't know me, my name is Anthony Collong, and I am the Public Utilities Director for Pender County Utilities. Within the next few months, my Deputy Director and myself, Mr. James Proctor and me, will be working in a five-year plan to address the welfare training of our employees, the needs for all our citizens when it comes to water and sewer, the expansion of our water system so that we can allow for more development in our county. So, as of right now, I want to tell you, I'm very excited to be back. My group is waiting for me to start tomorrow. I've been in orientation all day long, so I'm quite exhausted, to let you know. But I am ready to take off and take our utilities to our next level. Any questions?
So happy to have you back.
It is happy to have you back, yeah. Thank you all.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Do we need to open as Rocky Point Water and Sewer District, Mr. Proctor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I have a motion to open as Rocky Point Water and Sewer District?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? We are now open as Rocky Point Water and Sewer District.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board. What I'm bringing before you tonight is the action to approve the resolution accepting the deed of dedication for the water distribution system at Bridgewater Landing. Bridgewater Landing is a subdivision that was built and is now ready to be given to Pender County as the distribution system. It has been approved by Pender County and by NCDQ for that to be turned over.
Will you explain for the benefit of the public how that works?
So, with that, a developer comes in and wants to build a subdivision. They make application to Pender County, and then Pender County makes an application to the state to, for water expansion. They submit plans. The state approves those plans. Pender County approves those plans. The system is installed, inspected by Pender County. And at the time of that system being completion and ready to be activated and water to go to consumers, then that system is then given to the county from the developer. And at that time, Pender County takes ownership and responsibility of maintaining servicing that system.
But Pender County has not incurred any financial liability in developing that system?
No, ma'am. All of the construction and all is at the cost of the developer. And then that, all of that infrastructure is then given to Pender County for the water service. Yes, ma'am.
Any questions, comments?
Does it come with like a warranty for a certain amount of time?
It's usually a one-year warranty unless something is predetermined before, in the planning stage. But it's a one-year warranty on the system, once it goes live. So any problems, breaks, or any issues, the developer then is on the hook for a year. Yes, ma'am.
How many residences are, or houses or units are in that division? Do you know generally?
Off the top of my head, I do not know. And I knew you would ask me something I wouldn't know, so I'm just.
No, I'm not. I didn't mean to tee you up like that. I'm sorry. But my point, the point, I said that to say this. Everyone in that subdivision will now become a paying customer
Yes, absolutely.
of Rocky Point Water and Sewer.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Approved resolution accepting deed of dedication of water distribution system for Bridgewater Landing. Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have, need to go into any other, open as any other water? Okay. We're coming out of Rocky Point Water and Sewer District. Ms. Moser, do you have anything from the Pender Board of Health? Social Services, Mr. West Stewart? All right. Now we have public comment. Do we have any sign up for public comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. Carol Highsmith?
Good evening. I don't think I'm a stranger, do you all? I just have one question, because I plan to be at the meeting tomorrow night in Penderly. And if you all could give us some information on where to find the original documentation for broadband, that broadband project? You know, like, it had a document that described the project, what the goals were, who was going to be served, those kinds of things. Is there a document for that?
You probably need to talk with Mr. Chris Ward tomorrow night
Okay.
because Focus Broadband, on behalf of Pender County, had applied for that grant funding.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was trying to get ahead of the
Yes, ma'am.
so I know what the questions to ask tomorrow night. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Highsmith.
Larry Highsmith?
Good afternoon, Board Members, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm just a concerned citizen again about the Focus Broadband. And we came to hear the update from Mr. Ward and hear that and see what's going on and just how things are progressing. It's very important to know just what steps need to be taken and just how they are taken, so it was enlightening. Just want to, I guess, know just pretty much, I'm not pretty much for sure exactly, and I guess we can find that out tomorrow night. We'll talk again with Mr. Ward about just what our area, where we fall in line with how things are going to be made out and spread out. So look forward to that. Thank you.
Cheryl Highsmith?
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. My name is Cheryl Highsmith. And I would just like to ask, is there a geographic map of the water system in Pender County and the areas that do have water presently?
Yes, of course there is.
Okay, is a copy of that, could a copy of that be made available?
I would direct you to discuss that with Mr. Proctor.
Okay, and is that, is something that is on the website where we can pull up and look at? Okay, and also the one for Focus Broadband, we would like if that is available to be put on the website as well, like was on the chart there?
It is on the website.
That one is there?
Yes.
All right, then, well, thank you so much, because those geographical maps are very important for Western Pender County, and I'm sure other counties as well. That should be something that's privileged for all the citizens of Pender County. Thank you for your time. Look forward to tomorrow night and Thursday night.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate y'all coming. I appreciate your remarks. I look forward to meeting with you tomorrow night at Penderly School Auditorium, as well as Thursday night at 7:00 PM. Both meetings are at 7:00 PM. Tomorrow night, Tuesday, is at Penderly, the old auditorium. Doors will open at 7:00. And then Thursday night at the Shallow Volunteer Fire Department at 7:00 o'clock. All right. Mr. Manager, Mr. David Andrews, County Manager.
Nothing further than, again, just really glad that Anthony's with us, so.
Yeah, keep up the good work, you and your team. Appreciate you. All right, Mr. Buckton? Mr. Van?
Nothing for me, Madam Chair.
Mr. Thurman?
Wow. Closed session, pursuant to Item Three, Attorney-client, including discussion, excuse me, of the case of Coastal Pine Solar versus Pender County, 22CVS 1029. And that's all I had, Mr. Manager, was the only other thing was, it might be personnel, but I wasn't sure if you wanted to label that.
I think personnel.
Okay, then Item Six, personnel. I, yes, and it could be covered. I just wasn't sure if that's what you do, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Thurman. Commissioner George?
All I have is this Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and that month always plays a dear part in my life. I've had family members and close ones to me affected by it. So I'd like to take just a few seconds to remember those that have left us and honor those that are still here, not just breast cancer, but all cancers. Everyone, everyone's been affected and knows someone that's been affected by it. That's all I have.
Okay, I have some comments to make about the Wallace Airport. Matter of fact, we're working on now changing the airport's name to Wallace Pender County Airport. Be officially known as that, and Pender County is very involved in that. It's in Pender County anyway, but we took a lot to it. There was good news from the state budget last week. The money's been appropriated for the terminal building at the airport. It was that Carson Smith. He's done a lot of work on that, and the community did some work there in Poughkeepsie County.
That was quite a bit of money.
It is. Yeah, several little projects. Anything to the terminal building.
How much was it total?
Ten, ten million. We thank Carson Smith.
Yeah, Representative Smith has been doing a good job in Raleigh. We appreciate it. Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Hardy?
I'm grateful to be here. Thanks, Brad, for mentioning the thing about, you know, the cancer awareness. I know in some way, shape, or form, probably everybody in this room has been affected by cancer, and I'm one sitting here today, and very grateful to be here. I've been sick the last few weeks. And it's amazing how something can take you to the brink of death and bring you back and be sitting here. And I'm very grateful to be sitting here and able to serve the citizens of Pender County. And thank you for everyone for your prayers. I really do appreciate them greatly.
Great for you. Thank you, Mrs. George.
I do have a couple of things. A phone call I had about her taxes, a lady got her tax bill, and she is watching now. Her tax bill was 300 more than normal, and she's on a fixed income and trying to figure out how she's going to pay the extra 300. I fully understand where she's coming from. I'd like to ask the board tonight to rethink that four-year revamp that we passed. Just rethink it, and she is very concerned about staying in Pender County, if she's going to be able to stay in Pender County. Thank you for the call. She's watching tonight, and that's all I have.
Commissioner George, we had a nice presentation from our tax director about taking a real close look at your tax bill and what you're paying for, and also what accommodations can be made for the aged and elderly on fixed income.
She's very concerned. Thank you.
Yes. So, again, I can't say it enough times. We're going to have our community meetings on Tuesday night and Thursday night. We will have our county manager with us. We'll have Chris Ward, who you heard speak earlier tonight. We will have Assistant Director You will, we will have Assistant Director, Mr. Proctor, hopefully our new director, if he can spare the time with us, who just started today. And we will have the Health Department, Environmental Health members attending to discuss health issues with regards to our wells and expansion of water in Pender County, and to discuss Focus Broadband. So, that being said, do I have a motion that we go into closed session for items number three, attorney-client, including Coastal Pines, 22 CVS, 1029, and items related to number six, personnel? Do I have a motion?
Do I make a motion?
I have a second.
All in favor? We are now in closed session. Thank you all for coming.